Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for December 2nd, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco?
Frozen.
Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, he's frozen there.
Okay. Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
We're gonna try Commissioner Blanco again. Is he back? He's there. Okay. And Chair Lopez?
Here. Okay, uh, let's see. I guess we still have a forum, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Some additional information for this Zoom study, for the Zoom Planning Commission meeting. This is a regular Planning Commission public hearing. Comments should have been submitted to City Planning via email by 3:00 PM this afternoon. If you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raise hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will be unmuted and allowed to comment at the business at hand in order received. Maximum comment time is three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. If you are calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by darling star nine and identify yourself when unmuted. I believe Commissioner Blanco's back.
I'm back. Sorry about that, guys.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to the approval of Commission, Planning Commission minutes for November 18th, 2020. Did everyone have a chance to review those? If so, can we have a motion?
I move that we approve the November 18th, 2020 minutes.
It's moved by Commissioner Hernandez. It's been seconded by Commissioner Dickerson. All in favor, I'm sorry, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. We'll go ahead to the public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the Commission on any subject within the Commission's business. Each member of the audience in each subject is limited to a discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. This is for items not on the agenda. I see a hand up on the attendees. Mr. Stanley, please, go ahead.
Yes, um, this is my first name, so I'm not sure if I'm going in or if so, please forgive me.
Real quickly, this is for items not on the agenda. If you're wishing to comment on either item one or two, we still have yet to get to them.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, so forgive me again. I wanted to comment on 403 West Street.
Yeah, so this isn't the time for that. We will get to that in a little bit. So let me put you back on, in queue, and once we get to that, I'll make the announcement for that specific project. It's item two of our staff agenda, I'm sorry, of the Planning Commission agenda. Okay, so I don't see anyone else wishing to make a public comment. We'll go ahead and introduce some of the procedural aspects of tonight's meeting. I will introduce the agenda item, turn it over to staff for presentation. Once staff's presentation is completed, I will open up the agenda item to the commissioners for any questions of staff. After questions of the commission are answered, I will open the agenda item to the applicant who will be on as an attendee. The commissioners will have another chance to question the applicant and who will also be on as an attendee. I will then ask if there are any members of the public that wish to be heard in favor against or neutral toward the agenda item. For the public, please wait to raise your hand until after I have called for public comment on the item. The host will then unmute you in order received. Please remember if you're calling in, use the star nine keys to raise your hand. You will have three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. After the public comment is complete, only the applicant will be able to make any rebuttal. After the rebuttal and no further questions from the commission, I'll close the public hearing and turn the agenda item back to the commission for any question, decision, discussions, or a decision. With that, with those procedural instructions, we will now go to the first item of the agenda. Item one is the AT&amp;T Monopine telecommunications facility located at 1281 Furukawa Way. May we please have a staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lopez. Okay, so yeah, one second here, just getting the presentation up. All right, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Cody Graybell. I'm an associate planner with the City of Santa Maria, and tonight I'll be presenting a plan development permit for AT&amp;T to construct a 70-foot-tall wireless monopine facility at 1281 Furukawa Way. This is the same item that was introduced to the Planning Commission at the November 5th study session. Okay, so the site itself, it's located in the southwestern edge of the city. It's between Blosser Road and Hanson Way to the east and west, and it's in between Craig Drive and Stoll Road to the north and south. The area has been developed with a mix of industrial and storage uses immediately adjacent to the site, and the Planning Commission did recently look at the Blosser Southeast specific plant, which is just in the southeast corner of Stoll Road and Blosser Road. So the project site is 5.82 acres, and it's been built out with a mini warehouse facility. The telecommunications facility would be located in a planter for landscaping at the front of the project site, and it would be adjacent to one of the storage units. And there's some minor modifications, including expansion of the landscape planter, and then there's gonna be some trenching in order to accommodate some of the cables and wiring. But beyond that, the mini warehouse and the structures really won't be impacted by this So the site itself is zoned plan development, general manufacturing, and it's immediately surrounded by industrial zoning. The closest residential zoning is across Blosser. It's about 1,500 feet away, and from this distance, the visibility of the monopine is gonna be greatly reduced, and we're really only gonna see the outline of a tree. So now I'm just gonna walk through a couple photos of the site. This is just the existing conditions of the facility. Then this is looking into the lease area, and there are three existing eucalyptus trees that are shown on the screen. Now I'm gonna walk through a couple of the construction documents. So the first is the site plan. What's being shown on the screen in the red is the lease area, and then what's shown in the green is proposed access easement for AT&amp;T. So now this is just a more zoomed-in view of the lease area itself. Again, we can see that the proposal would be within a landscape planter and adjacent to a storage unit. The yellow dashed area is meant to represent the location of an emergency generator. This generator would be fully enclosed behind an existing CMU wall, and I do know that there were some questions from the Commission during the November 5th study session about the generator itself and its proximity. I did speak with the applicant, and they had mentioned that they've utilized designs like this in the past without any problems, and that they do understand a building permit will be required prior to installation. So now this is the equipment plan, kinda just looking from the top down. So right here, we have the 70-foot monopine, and then within one of the adjacent storage units, we would have most of the equipment, which would be fully enclosed from view. So it's a little tough to see, but this dashed line represents the existing planter edge, and then this solid line represents the expanded edge. So we can see that there's just a small amount of expansion required to accommodate the facility. And then these two green circles represent some shrubs that are gonna be planted to add some vegetation. So next, I'm gonna walk through the elevations. On the left, we have the north elevation, and the right is the south elevation. So this south elevation is actually looking from the end of the cul-de-sac along Furukawa Way into the site, so it's showing an existing boundary fence, and then the location of the generator, which is fully screened. And then this left elevation is from within the site, and this represents the existing building at the base of the facility where all the accessory equipment would be stored. So now these are the east and west elevations. On the left is the east, on the right is the west. There are some measures that are being implemented by staff to ensure that our administrative guidelines are being met, and one of those is that there's gonna be socks installed on top of the antennas, which will be of the same texture and color as the monopine itself, which does a really effective job of blending the antennas into the monopine and removing the antennas from the skyline, which is something we try to achieve with all of these projects. So now next, I'm gonna walk through the photo simulations. So this is just looking on-site from an adjacent storage unit. And now this is from Furukawa Way. It's about 200 feet away from the facility, so this helps to show how with the socks and the blending, the antennas really, even at 200 feet, are really, you know, out of the skyline and challenging to see. And then this here is from Hanson Way, so it's across the railroad tracks to the west, looking from the row crops back onto the site, so it's about 560 feet away. And at this distance, you know, if you were just looking back, it just kind of looks like the general shape of a tree, and it really does an effective job of obscuring the antennas and just removing them from visibility. So lastly, I'm gonna walk through the long-term evolution 4G coverage maps. So we've seen these before. The purple represents weak signals, the yellow represents the medium signal, and then green is a good signal or a strong signal. So one thing I just would like to mention is that there are two sites to the north and to the south, respectively, that the city has recently approved. Each of the sites are within .8 and 1.4 miles of each other. So the nearest site is on West Main, and then the further site is off of Bed Arabia. And they have received approval, and they're in the process of being built. So I'm gonna show the existing coverage, and then a map after the two approved sites are activated, and then a third map showing all three sites activated. So this is the next scenario, showing the two adjacent sites. So we can still see immediately next to the site, there's a weak and median signal that's present. Then this lastly shows that that final coverage is closed in, and there now would be a strong signal. So just wrapping up here, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve Plan Development 2020-0007. One thing I'd like to note for the record is that we did receive a comment, and that has been distributed to the Planning Commission. Or, excuse me, that's for the next project, so I got too excited. So this concludes my presentation. Staff, the applicant, and property owner are now available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Does the Commission have any questions for us now? I see no questions being, or no hands raised. May we hear from the applicant?
Victor is here. He should be able to speak now.
Hi. Hello.
Hi, Victor.
Hi, everyone. My name is Victor. I'm the applicant. And when we approached this project, we really thought that this was the best location. Like, we used an existing planter, we used one of the existing storage units to put our equipment in it, and also we used a trash enclosure that was not being used to put the generator. So I think this was the best sign, and I hope the Commission approves the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Does the Commission have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, Victor, do you guys have any other installations that you're aware of that are on a similar facility, and where you guys store the equipment in a storage room?
Not that I'm aware of. This is the first one that I encountered that it's on a storage facility.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was something that you've seen, or something sort of typical, or what, but I was just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions of the applicant from the Planning Commission? Mr. Flores, I have a question. With respect to the trash enclosure that wasn't being used but will be holding equipment, is there a replacement trash enclosure that's gonna be proposed?
I'm sure there's older trash enclosures that are within the facility. This is one that the property owner was not using.
I'm taking an aerial view, and it seems like that might be the only one on site. Is, did Bayez on?
Yes, Mr. Flores. Mr. Chair, excuse me.
I did. Typically, when an older, non-standard trash enclosure is used, is there typically a requirement for a replacement city standard parking, I'm sorry, trash enclosure?
Yeah, generally, we like to, when the project was originally designed, it was designed to have the trash enclosures that's there. If they're not using it, then, I mean, technically, they should have a replacement.
Right, yeah, because it doesn't seem like there's another enclosure anywhere on site.
Actually, I'm aware that the storage unit of facility, they have older trash enclosures within it. Maybe they're not shown on the drawings, but that was my understanding from the property owner.
I was looking at the area from Google Earth.
Okay.
In any event, I'm sure that our development, Department will look at that.
Yeah, and if it's required to replace it, we can definitely replace the trash enclosure with a new one.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for the applicant from the Commission? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public, for those who are either in favor, opposed, or neutral towards the project. I see a raised hand on Mr. Stanley. Mr. Stanley, if you're wanting to comment on this project, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a concern. It seemed that it might have been glanced over, or they had addressed in a previous meeting, but Cody brought up the distance from the tower to the generator, and there was a concern there, and he said that the developer has done things like this in the past, and no wrong. Where is the evidence to support that? That is my question. Because to say that it works and to say that, to show that it works are two different things. I'm not necessarily opposed to this, you know, again, it's great to improve our city's cellular coverage, but it's just a concern of maybe safety based on the distance between the two options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Cody, is that something you could answer, or Mr. Flores?
I think I'll let Mr. Flores answer that.
Okay, so to answer that question, we do get all the required permits, and we get the tag permit, which they get reviewed by fire. So in AT&amp;T, I'm sure they have built other sites similar to this one, and we can definitely show some proof that we can, we have done something like this in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Is there anyone else on that would like to make a comment, either for or against or neutral towards this project? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this item and bring it back to the Commission for a motion, a discussion, or a being commented.
Excuse me, Chair Lopez, this is Dana Edie, and Cody is going to mention that I think we can add a condition of approval addressing that trash enclosure to the project, so I'll go ahead and let Cody speak on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dana.
Yeah, thank you, Dana. Yeah, so like Dana had mentioned, we can incorporate a condition of approval to replace the trash enclosure if necessary.
Yeah, I think the standard trash enclosures are fairly large. They're double the size because they also have a recycled container component in that enclosure, and that's the reason I was asking. This one seems like it's, the existing one looks like it's a very, it's the older version. David, I don't know, Engineer Bayez can clarify that, but I think the standard are two side-by-side trash bins. Is that what you think?
That's correct. There's actually, to be quite frank, the new standard also for residential includes space for organics, but in this particular case, it's a where it's a storage facility. So as Cody has mentioned, we can amend the conditions to include that replacement of a current trash enclosure standard.
Thank you, David. I see Commissioner Dickerson has his hand up. Go ahead, Commissioner Dickerson.
Yeah, just two things quick. I agree with Commissioner, or Chair Lopez's observation about the trash enclosures, and we should definitely require, whatever the current standard is, that a new trash enclosure should be put in as a replacement, if necessary, to meet code. Additionally, under normal circumstances, I would be questioning much more about the height of this one. I just want to put my two cents in that, you know, 70 feet is pretty high, but being this far out on the outskirts of town and this far distance from residential, it's not too much of a concern of mine at this time, but that being said, if the same project came through closer to town or in parks, that sort of thing, I'd definitely be questioning 70 feet, but once again, it's this far out on the outskirts, so it's not a concern at this time. It's something to think of for future projects, that this doesn't end up being a foot in the door for seven-foot monopines. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. Commissioner Seifert?
Well, thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the applicant for giving us that detailed map that I asked for. You know, in these days and times, look at what we're doing right now. You know, the Commission is at home, and we're all using data. We're all using these cell towers just to have our meetings that we used to go to. Kids are using it for school. Things have changed so much. So I always am concerned, as Commissioner Dickerson, about the height of these things. I know we have the 90-foot on Main Street, and this is the 70-foot. We've asked multiple questions as to why they need to be so high, and the equipment that's added to them, and the different companies that put their equipment on it. So I think this is a decent location. The pine is a nice pine. I would suggest they look closely at that trash enclosure if that's going to be a condition of development, because trash enclosures have changed greatly over the years. They create, they need twice or even more than twice the room that they used to. It might be easier for him to put the generator in another location rather than try to build another trash enclosure. He might find that he's biting off a little more than he thinks when he's asking for that. He needs the land, he needs the area to put it in, and then it's quite a bit bigger than what they used to be. So that's my comment on that. Otherwise, I'm excited to see the coverage increase.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Any other comments from the Commission? Also, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, does any Commissioner wish to disclose any ex parte communication for this project, for this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and, again, bring it back to the Commission. Any questions, comments, discussion, or we can intervene in motion.
I can make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve Planning Development Permit EB 2020-0007 with the condition that the trash enclosure be replaced.
Do we have a second?
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Seifert. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Flores, and good luck. Okay, move on to the second item of the agenda. This is the Gonzalez Multifamily Residential Project located at 403 West Street. And do the commissioners wish to disclose any ex parte communication on this project? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, please have a staff report.
Okay, one second, thank you. Chair Lopez? Just gonna get Zoom dialed in. Thanks for your patience. Okay, yeah, so this is the second item that I'll be presenting tonight. It's a Plan Development and Conditional Use Permit for multifamily development, including two single-family residences and a duplex on a site that has an existing single-family residence. So we have a total of five units at 403 West Street, and this item was also introduced to the Planning Commission at the November 5th study session. So the project's generally located in the middle of the city, so it would be between Broadway and South Thornburg Street to the east and west, and Carmen Lane and Del Porto Lane to the north and south. And the area has been built out with a mix of residential, commercial, and some industrial So the project site, it's at the corner of Thornburg and West Street. It's .44 acres in size. As mentioned before, there's currently an existing single-family residence that would remain. Some of the accessory structures that are being shown have since been demoed. One thing I'd like to mention is that, right now, this is a private street, and part of this approval will require a dedication of the public right-of-way along the project frontage itself, and this would include improvements to curb gutter and sidewalk, as well as some utility improvements for water and sewer. So the site is zoned Plan Development Medium Density Residential, and it's surrounded by residential zoning. There are also some commercial and industrial zoning that surrounds the project site. So this is a view from the corner of Thornburg and West Street. As mentioned before, there would be improvements during the right-of-way dedication, so this wall would be removed and this fencing here, we'd have a city standard driveway and sidewalk and street trees all being installed, and the roadway would be improved that, parallel to the project site. So now I'm just gonna walk through the site plan. So access in and out would be from West Street. The two single-family residences would be at the back of the site, and then the duplex would be at the front of the site. Each of these units would be three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, and they all would be two stories. So the single-family residences would be about 23 feet tall, and then the duplex would be about 24 feet tall, so these all meet the R2 maximum height requirement of 30 feet. And all of the residences would meet the parking requirement, so each single-family residence would have a garage and carport, and then the duplex would have one covered parking space in the garage, and then a parking space in the driveway. So the units in the back, Unit A and B, would be about 1,538 square feet, and then Unit C and D in the front would just be a tad bit smaller. They'd be about 1,000... C and D in the front would just be a tad bit smaller, they'd be about 1,511 square feet. And the density in this part of the town is one unit per 3,000 square feet of land area, so after the right-of-way is dedicated, the site would be about 16,000 square feet, so this would permit up to five units, so this is the maximum density as proposed. And then, one thing the applicant is requesting is a reduction to some of the setbacks along the interior side yard, so there's a request for a one-foot reduction at unit D, and then there's a request for a two-and-a-half foot reduction at unit B, so part of this planned development permit requires that we make some findings to support the requested reduction, and these findings need to demonstrate that the request is due to the situational context of the project site, and also that this will lead to a superior design, so the one-foot reduction right here is to accommodate fire access into the site, so it's really just to improve the safety of the residents, and then the largest reduction of two-and-a-half feet is actually on the second story of unit B, and this is just for a closet space, the applicant has explained that there's no windows or vantage points, anything that would be integrated into the closet, so staff feels that this won't lead to, you know, really any major privacy concerns with the adjacent residents that are not being shown, on this site plan to the east, the nearest residence is about 60 feet away, so, yeah, in terms of privacy, staff doesn't really have a concern, so based off these items, we support the modified setbacks. So now I'm gonna walk through the floor plans, we're looking at unit A and B, so these are the single-family residences, and they're just duplicates of each other, so each floor plan is a mirror image essentially, so on the left, we have the first floor, which would include the kitchen and living room and dining area, as well as a half bath, and then on the right, we have the second floor, which shows all three bedrooms and two full bathrooms, and there's also a small covered deck. So now these are the floor plans for the duplex, they're also mirror images of each other, so on the left is the first floor, and then the right is the second floor, and it's very similar in design, kitchen and dining and living areas on the first floor, and then on the second floor is the three bedrooms and two full bathrooms. So now I'm just gonna briefly talk about the landscape plan.
Can I ask a question Chair?
I can't hear anything. I'm sorry, yeah, we were gonna wait till the end of the presentation, but please, yeah, go ahead.
While we're on the floor plans, please show us on unit B, what is sticking out, two-and-a-half feet, this closet, I didn't see it when you went through the floor plans.
So it's.
Why are we putting it, why are we allowing two-and-a-half feet, that's quite a ways. Where is that located, Cody, is it this stuff up here?
Yes, Commissioner Seifert, so it's right here. And I think I'll let the applicant just jump in at the end of the presentation, he can maybe just go into a little more detail about the design, if that works.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you Commissioner Seifert.
Okay, so just getting back into the landscape plan, so our code requires that 20% of the site have landscaping, and this proposal's proposing 23%, nine trees would need to be removed to accommodate the project, or excuse me, three trees need to be removed, and nine trees will replace the three that are removed, and then some permeable pavers are gonna be installed in front of the duplex, which will just help soften the appearance of the parking area from the street, and there are private yards that are being proposed, that are next to the units that are approximately 300 square feet, that meet our minimum sizes from the medium-density residential zone. So now I'm just gonna go through the elevations very briefly, so there's a common design, this is looking at the single-family residential units, so the building material proposed is stucco, and the roof is a composite shingle, so staff has added a condition of approval requiring that the shingles be of a high-definition architectural grade, the applicant has added multiple architectural features, which help add some interest to the building, these include some terracotta vents that are being shown, there is false corbels being proposed, and we have some molding that has been placed near the entryways, that just all adds some interest to the building, so this is the same design just for the duplex. Now, lastly, I'm just gonna run through some of the renderings, they just kind of add a third dimension, and I think are useful, so this is just a perspective from the corner of West Street and Thornburg, looking northeast, this is looking into the site from West Street, so the commission did request during the study session on November 5th that some window sills be added on the first floor, and the architect did take note of that and add the window sills which are being shown. So this is just a view of the single-family residence, so it can show just a little more detail of some of the molding and some of the architectural interests that the architect has included in the design. And then lastly, this is just a perspective from the adjacent property to the east, so this would be looking northwest. So wrapping up here, staff recommends that the planning commission, by motion, approve PD 2019 dash 0013 and U 2020 dash 0001, and at this time, I would like to mention that we did receive a comment from the public, and that was distributed to the commissioners and included in the project file, so this concludes my presentation, staff, the applicant, and property owner are now available for questions, thank you.
Thank you Cody, Cody, regarding that letter that we received on West Street, there was some, there was some mention of some suspicious activities by the planning commission or the community development staff, could you actually go a little bit into how the project is typically announced, or advertised, from the city newspaper, not just for tonight's hearing, but also for the study session, could you go on that just briefly?
Chair Lopez, I can speak to that, and then if we need any assistance from the city attorney, we can go to her as well, so are you, is your question regarding the noticing that's completed for these hearings?
Well, just some of the, one of the items of the letter said, talked about suspicious activities of the planning commission at the City of Santa Maria, with respect to the development or redevelopment of this area, that it almost seems like we did not announce to the community that this project was coming forward, either at study session or, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, there's a procedure, and it's always out in the open.
Right, so for this hearing, we sent out notices to all property owners within 300 feet, which is in accordance with the state law requirements for noticing the hearings, there was also a legal ad that was placed in the newspaper in advance of the hearing, study sessions, we do not send out noticing, the 300-foot noticing for study sessions or put them in the newspaper, but we do post study session agendas on our city website, and so those are available in advance of those meetings. And this, that's consistent with how we've been noticing all of our items at planning commission, I do believe that the author of the letter is in attendance at the hearing tonight, and will be available to comment further on his letter and the comments that he made, and maybe the intent of those comments.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, okay, we'll go ahead and bring this back to the commission, does the commission have any questions for staff at this moment, Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you Chair, can we go back to the site plan Cody?
Yes, one second Commissioner Seifert, let me, I'm just gonna have to set up Zoom. So can you guys, can you still see the screen?
Not yet, no.
Okay, sorry, technical difficulties. Yeah.
One moment Chair Lopez, we'll bring it up, we're just having a little technical difficulty.
Do it a lot faster than I would have.
Dana, Dana Lopez?
Okay, sorry about the delay there, let me go back to the site plan, Commissioner Seifert. Would it be the floor plan or the site?
So Cody, I'm having, I'm having a lot of issues with this two-and-a-half foot encroachment on the property, even though we're talking about 60 foot now, there's no reason that the zoning won't allow them to do the exact thing that these applicants are approaching with, right, can't the property next door do the exact same configuration?
Yes, but potentially they could propose something very similar.
So if they came to us and said they wanted two-and-a-half feet, then we would end up five feet less on our fire protection and our side yard setback, so on unit A, what is our setback there, it's very hard to see, it's very small, what's our setback on unit A from the property?
From Thornburg right here?
Yes.
So that's 15 feet, which complies with our setbacks.
How many was it?
15.
Okay, because what they're asking for here, I remember we talked about this at study session, and for some reason, I only remember one foot, and I questioned the applicant, and I warned them about the fire rating, and that they would have to beat that up, and you know, for the closet, and I don't like what I see here, what they're doing, my suggestion would be either to redesign the unit, and get rid of that closet encroaching, or somehow move these units over, what do we have in between on the drives, do we have just 50 feet, and 25 feet for backup, do we have a dimension between those units, can unit B move over a little bit, or, I can't see that dimension.
Yeah, so between unit A and B, is that what we're asking?
Well, the carport's there, you need the backup area, I think code is a minimum of 48 feet, you gotta have 24 feet to backup both cars.
So yeah, right now, there's 33 feet.
So who can tell me if that's a 24-foot setback, or if that is a correct setback? Who knows?
A backup is 25.
But I mean, now that they're backing out together, does that mean that we have to make it 50?
No, the total, the total's 25.
Okay, so we have more than enough room in between the carports, I just, I'm having a real issue with encroaching two-and-a-half feet on that side yard setback, I just, I don't like what it's doing to the property next to it, that's my comment for right now.
Thank you Commissioner Seifert, Cody also, I am having some difficulty with the encroachment into the setback as well, because is the 15-foot setback, the required setback to the west, is that correct, the one that Commissioner Seifert just asked about?
So Chair Lopez, I just want to clarify, so the 15-foot setback is for corner lots, which is, was mentioning for unit A, and for the interior side, it's five feet, so if this wasn't in a planned development overlay, traditionally, the requirement is five feet, but with this PD overlay, there is the ability to request modifications to setbacks, so it's being reduced by two-and-a-half feet as proposed to accommodate a closet space.
Right, but that's not the only encroachment, because it's also an approach on 15-foot setback, because it's two-and-a-half feet into that setback as well on unit A, right? Because the 15-foot setback is shown to the face of the building?
So there's only, Chair Lopez, unit A doesn't have the same design on the second floor, it's only on unit B, is my understanding.
I thought unit A and B is just a mirror of unit A.
Yeah, that is a good point, let me defer to the architect briefly, and see if Mr. Smith can clarify. Mr. Smith, are you available?
I think he's muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you commissioners, for this opportunity to respond to that concern, which I understand, both units are identical, they both have the two-and-a-half foot projection of the closet, which is nine feet in length, and we feel that by doing this, it allows for more window space on the north-facing walls, and also providing for a window on east and west walls of unit A and B respectfully, respectively, to promote cross-ventilation of the rooms, so we are proposing this encroachment with the belief that we are providing a better home for a reasonable cost by doing that, and without any windows, causing no overlook issues, we would be meeting, you know, minimum distance between buildings, fire ratings, any code, building code requirements would be met, so we're hoping that it would be, it would make sense to you that it's not ideal, but the compromise provides for a better design, and that's what we're after here, we're trying to, in an affordable way, get the best design we can, so it's affordable by simple structures, but with ornamentation and nice plans.
Thank you Mr. Smith, but also, isn't the entryway, the porch area, doesn't that also encroach on the, is that, what is that, is that the roof of the entryway or to the slider, doesn't that also encroach in that 15-foot setback?
Yes, sir, yes, there is, again, that's a projection for coverage over the slider, as you mentioned correctly, and, you know, it's providing shading, we're facing east and west on those elevations, and wanting to provide the shade, also just protection from the elements on those sliding doors, or, sorry, they're not sliding doors, but yeah.
But also, isn't that, doesn't that roof extend further out into two-and-a-half feet, almost?
Let me look at my construction documents.
I'm looking at floor plan, maybe 1.1.
It does, a projection, if we need to reduce it to not extend any further, we can, absolutely, but, you know, we're just trying to provide a little bit of protection from the elements.
Okay, thank you, thank you Mr. Smith, does the commission have any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, does the applicant have a presentation?
Chair Lopez, Commissioner Dickerson just has his hand up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dickerson, please go ahead.
Sorry, I was desperately trying to find my raise hand button, so, yeah, the, I guess the question I have is initially is for staff, Cody, we can go back to that kind of 3D image that you had of the whole site?
Okay, yes, Commissioner Dickerson, one second, so those are the renderings?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, so I guess the question I have is the, for the, for units A and B, they have a carport, and then is that a garage basically then to the, just next to the carport?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, of course, they have, okay, good. And then, of course, they have a garage for each, for the duplex as well, for the larger units. You know, I know that under normal circumstances, we've been talking about for ADUs, that garages can be converted at some point, or a second floor can be put on a garage, that sort of thing. Just theoretically, could this development be made like this, and then they come back later on to, to basically turn this into an R3 unit by packing additional people as ADUs for each of those garages?
Yes, Commissioner Dickerson, that is a good point. So because this is in a multifamily zone, state law allows up to 25% of the units to be converted. So in this case, one unit potentially could, like, have a garage conversion, that could occur.
Okay. And could the garage, would the, for the duplexes, is there, is there an interior pre-existing wall? So if they decided to make the duplex garages the one they wanted to turn into an ADU, would they, they only be able to do half, you know, one of those two garages? Or would it be the full, the full garage? The two different doors we see?
So it could potentially be the full garage. There are some limitations to the square footage that would apply for, we'd call that an attached ADU. But potentially, both spaces could be utilized?
Because it seems, it seems like the applicant's trying to maximize their rental capability on this, on this plot, so I don't think it's unreasonable to think that down the road, we might, we might see additional ones. Now, if that were the case, what happens to the parking situation of the, of the spaces that have been converted? Do they basically just go out on the street at that point?
Yeah, potentially. There's some state requirements that we'd have to double-check, but in most cases, replacement parking isn't required.
Okay. And then the, and then I guess the question which Commissioner Seifert brought up, which I certainly see a point on, is this, the encroachment, of course, the concerns for Chair Lopez as well, the encroachment of that two and a half feet, which then you have an additional element there that looks like it is going to be a minimum of two and a half feet, if not just a wee bit more than that. So perhaps the thing to do is to move that particular unit, move it over two and a half, five feet, whatever the agreed-on amount is, so then we alleviate the whole issue of encroachment. But anyway, that's my, that's my thoughts on the matter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. Mr. Smith, the architect for the project, has his hand up. Maybe he can shed light on a little bit more of that. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I would like to, regarding the garages of the duplex, first of all, we are designing that interior wall to be a sheer wall, so it'd be pretty tough to open the two garages into one garage. And as they are now, it'd be pretty, pretty small for an ADU, you know, less than 200 square feet. So I don't anticipate that happening. I think that that would be not very good planning for us, to not just do that at this point, to make the ADU part of this project if we're entitled to it, because that would be tearing up something that's just newly built to accommodate that. In terms of the concern of moving the buildings together, we could look at that, but my sense is that we're, we're wanting to separate these units, just so that they're a nice distance apart from each other, so, and also for the fire separation for the driveway, they've been pushed apart, as shown now, but if needed, we can look at siding them differently. But if we're able to maintain this projection, I feel that is taking a little bit of the boxiness out of it by having that articulation in form, and it's functional, and it makes for a good floor plan. But in terms of the proximity of the buildings to each other, I'd be looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Seifert?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. Hey, Cody, so I'm looking at this site plan, and we've got an existing non-conforming unit. Is that what's going on with that, with that front house? Because they're definitely approaching on 15-foot setback?
Yeah, Commissioner Seifert, that's correct. So this building, or this structure was built in the 1950s, and it was originally in the county, and then the city annexed it. Our earliest records show in the early 90s. So we kind of just inherited, like you said, the non-conforming structure.
Yeah, I would, I would, you know, to me, it would make a heck of a lot more sense to push the buildings to the left and continue with the non-conformants. We're already, we've already got the one unit against the street. You know, two-story buildings on a property line are just so, it's so hard for the people next door. And to then encroach another two and a half feet into that, I just don't, I just don't like the idea of that at all, especially if I'm the property owner next door. So there are ways to fix this, through a different floor plan, through movement on the site, through possibly granting encroachment on the left side of the property, or west side, rather than on the east side, which is against a property, another property owner. I'd much rather see that on the street side than on the property side. I think we really need to think about the property owners next door, and what this would, you know, when this thing gets built, and they've got a two and a half foot setback all of a sudden, when they thought they had five, five's very, very small. And then if you have a five-foot setback on the other side, that's 10-foot. And so now, instead of a 10-foot setback, you know, we've got a seven and a half foot setback. So the whole thing, I don't like it. I'm just saying. It doesn't, it's not a good design to encroach on other people's property. That's, you know, we've got a letter writer, he's a gentleman that lives in the area possibly, and he's not happy with the, with the, with the site, just because of what they're doing. And then if we go ahead and allow encroachments and special allowances, you know, then we're setting the precedence for the next neighbors. So let's say the guy comes in next door, says he wants to do the same thing, and, well, he likes the idea of having extra room for a closet, and he designed his building so that it was five foot away, but his closet's two and a half feet away. So now we're down to five-foot setback. And that might be fire, it might be code, but is it a good design? I don't, I don't particularly believe so. I think that this design can be modified, so that it works for everyone. But in my opinion right now, it's not working for me. So I really, for me, it needs to be looked at again. Thank you.
Are we at the, are we at the comment stage?
I was asking a question on the setbacks, and that's, I just wanted to give my reason why I'm saying that. And why I'm asking those questions, Commissioner. It just seems to me that, it just doesn't seem right to me to be asking for that for anybody, you know, because I think it was me at the study session that talked about the one-foot setback. And I don't remember the two and a half foot setback, and then as Commissioner Lopez just pointed out, that the projection on the awning is now even harder than that. So I'm just seeing a few things that I didn't notice on the study session, and I'm just, just trying to let you know why I'm making these comments, questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah, if you, I have a couple of comments based on Commissioner Seifert's, but I can, I can hold off the comment section, or if the Chair is fine with it, I'll go ahead and make them now, whichever Chair will you prefer, sir.
Well, we have the architect on board, and I did have a follow-up question also, but please go ahead if you.
All right, then, yeah, then I'll go ahead. I agree with Commissioner Seifert. I, I think that these additional encroachment is probably just a bad, bad idea. The, one of the statements that the applicant made, that the architect made, is that they wanted to make the distance between their two units a little further, and try to make it a little bit nicer for their, for their property and their, and their units. And then they also wanted the fire, you know, to pick up the fire was, was good enough. You know, I, I think that if they're going to be, if they're going to be taking from someone, they shouldn't be taking from their neighbor, their neighbor's property, to make their property a little nicer. In other words, work within what you, what you have, because as Commissioner Seifert said, the adjoining property owner at some point may decide to do the exact same thing, and then, and then we have a real difficult time, you know, saying, well, sure for these guys, but not for you. So it's just, I think that, you know, we see it occasionally where, where a property owner wants to make something nice, and I think that's good, good for them, but it becomes something that's at the expense of an adjoining property. And when it, when it becomes something like that, I think that it's, it's probably best they just live within what they can, and move the, move the units around a little bit to, to little, give a little more elbow room to, for the property owner adjacent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. Yeah, and just to add a little bit more, I know that the four-foot request was also accompanied by, I'm not sure what the overhang is, but it looked to be about 30 inches. So now you're, you're back at maybe, you know, two and a half feet more, so three and a half feet into the, into the setback at the, at the face of, at the facial. And again, looking at the upstairs closet, you're going to have a, it looks like about a six-inch overhang on, on one of the elevations. So, so you're, you're getting really close, and I know that there, our code does allow architectural projections and things of that nature into the setback, but it's also limited in width. Is that, is that correct, Dana?
I can jump in. Yeah, I can jump in, Chair Lopez. Yeah, that is correct. There's limitations on the, the amount of the projection.
And I know that there's some flexibility with the plan development permit, and maybe that's the reason for the ask, but I agree with Commissioner Seifert, and I agree with Commissioner Dickerson. I just think there's, there's enough area or distance on the project to maybe shimmy those back a bit, or even, even on the duplex that the four-foot setback was being asked, you just shave six inches on each unit, there's your foot there. And it looks like it's doable, because the circulation within the unit looks like it, like it functions very well. There's some wide hallways, and some nice white bedrooms that, you know, you sit, you there's six inches from either, either unit, you're, you're, it's not much. So I really do think there's some wiggle room there. I do agree with Commissioner Seifert that just opening up that can of worms with encroaching into the setback at a, at a, at a good clip is, is probably not a good idea. So any other questions for the applicant from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public comment period. Anyone wishing to make a comment, either for, against, or neutral for the project, now is the time. I believe Mr. Stanley has been waiting here, so I'll go ahead and unmute Mr. Stanley. Please go ahead.
I do appreciate.
Yep, three minutes.
I will try to make it as quickly as possible. First, I'd like to comment on the letter that was sent out. Dana did address this. I thought it was really small to font, it was very difficult to read. I had to help my mother and a neighbor register for this Zoom meeting. I thought that was, and the timing was a little short. I don't understand if it may be within order, but we are almost telling to this project, and this is the first we're hearing about it, within this neighborhood. I live at 312 West Street. I've watched the owner of this property violate city code over and over. He tore down a structure to build a structure that was red flagged, and had to be retorn down because he didn't have permits. He built a brick wall on a retaining, an existing retaining wall, which is on the east side of the property, that was red flagged and had to be torn down because it wasn't, wasn't permitted. The individual who owns this property has not been beneficial to this neighborhood, has not cared about his neighbors. You talk about, one of the things that have been addressed here is parking. You have eight parking spots on the property, with more than eight bedrooms, and this neighborhood has a history of having a lot of migrant workers in it. And we have already a parking catastrophe here in the peak seasons of harvest, with all of our neighbors and all the cars. I have a neighbor at 316 West Street that has, like, eight cars on his property, and that bleed out in the street. And there's times where there's, it's barely wide enough on the street for a fire truck to get through. And now you want to jam four more units onto this property, which is a single-family neighborhood? Every property has one home, and now you're trying to disrupt the flow of how this neighborhood was designed back in the 50s? And put, and slam four more units onto one, onto one property that disrupts the, the flow and the energy of this neighborhood with single-family homes? I don't agree with it. I understand the development has needed to take place, but the going for maximum density is ridiculous for this neighborhood, because it doesn't fit the motif. And to go about my comments that you've all received, my letter that was sent to Cody, I feel that the only reason this project is being fast-tracked within a year, as Cody has addressed to me, that it's been working for a year, is because of so much property increase in the value of taxes coming from that property. While the owner of 310 West Street bought a property five years ago that's city planning and city approved, and then let get built after multiple violations, red flagged, and the project sat for so long that it went to tax sale. Rupak bought it five years ago and still has not been able to do anything with it, because the city continues to red flag, to roadblock.
It's been three minutes, Mr. Stanley. Please, please wrap up.
No, 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 I was actually, that was my last comment, so we're perfectly timed, Chairman Lopez, so appreciate, appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Mr. Zeus, please go ahead. Mr. Zeus, are you there?
Hello?
Yes. You have three minutes.
I'm at 315 West Street. I'm actually down the hill to the east of the property that the, that the proposed development is. I have, I have issues with, and I, and I talked to, I talked to Cody earlier today, and he said this might be more of a streets or a engineering issue, but I just wanted to address it in the meeting tonight. The, the developer right now has a construction business that he's running out of the side lot of that property. And, and with that, and all the other cars that are in the area, when they come in in the morning and stuff, it's, it's horribly hard, and it's dangerous to pull out on Thornburg with it. And my request would be to ask if there was something that could be done with this, with the Thornburg and West Street area, in, in that intersection, to where you could actually pull out? Because once, once all, all of his employees get there, and everybody else parks there, you can't, you can hardly pull out on the Thornburg. And I have a little boy, I'm a single father, and I, it's, it's a death trap to try to get out of there sometimes. The other issue I have is, I'm at the, I'm at the lowest spot of the street, and, and every, 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 all the runoff from all the other properties comes down into my property. And there's a antiquated storm drain that's on my property, that's, that's supposed to channel all the runoff from all the construction and all the other properties on. all the runoff from all the construction and all the other properties on the street. It's not a maintained-by-the-city storm drain and I think this ought to be addressed also before any kind of development goes on the street. Because I am the lowest part of the street and I get everybody else's runoff. So that would be my request, just to look into that. I'd also like to say that the property just east of that, next door to the east of that property is approximately six feet lower than the proposed development property. And there's a retainer wall sort of, so to put something that close to the edge of it would be like having a huge wall. And I don't even know if it's a retainer wall or not, but it should be. So that would be my issues with it, the biggest part of the street. I'd like to talk to, and I'll call David Baez with the city engineer and I'd like to propose something to the city as far as my property goes. There was a winter reward started the project across the street. There was plans for septic and storm drains and utilities to come across the east side of my property as a ten-foot easement. And I would consider working with the city with that and also for water on my side of the street.
Okay, Mr. Zeus.
Water coming through, so.
Three minutes are up. I appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and defer any off-site improvements that would be required for this project to Mr. Baez. David, is that something you could talk to Mr. Zeus about?
Mr. Chair, yes, I'd be more than happy to discuss with Mr. Zeus.
And in the conditions that will be based upon the property with respect to offsites, you might be able to contact him and talk to him on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I believe I sent an email just to confirm with you, Mr. Zeus. I sent an email to you and you still have my contact information, correct?
He's muted. Mr. Zeus, can you hear? Mr. Zeus, are you still there? Okay, David, if...
There you are.
There he is.
Sorry, I'm trying to do this Zoom meeting on my phone, so it's kind of hard. You have my house phone and I think you have my cell phone and it's probably the best way to reach me. I work 10 or 11 hours a day, so I'm not home much and I am a single father and I try to make things work. So I'd like to set up a meeting and I would suggest maybe even a visual inspection of the site proposed in the surrounding areas, just to see if there would be, you know, there would be a clearer vision of the future proposed development on this street. I'm all for development and bringing up things to standards, but I think there's other issues that need to be addressed in doing so, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zeus.
All right, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead and there's one more. I know the project architect is on with his hand up. This is the public portion of it. Let me just grab one more attendee who'd like to make a comment. That would be Kathy. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I've lived in this neighborhood since 1960. I've watched development come and go.
I'm sorry, you have three minutes. Sorry, go ahead.
That's fine. I'm just not happy with the way this gentleman has taken on his project. He said like everybody else has, he has taken no regard for any of the neighborhood. He wants things his way and, yes, I've made it a little tough on him going through code enforcement and stuff like that because he wants to break all the rules. As far as that corner goes, it's a very dangerous corner. It's constantly plugged up with cars. Something has got to be taken into consideration on the parking of that area and getting in and out of that driveway because it's right almost at the end of the street and it's going to create a bigger hazard than we already have with all the cars we have down here. Like my son said, you can't even probably get a fire truck down here during full picking season. So this is going to create a bigger hazard for everyone involved. And that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Kathy. David, I know as part of the project, I know there's going to be some off-site improvements also at the intersection. I did notice that that was part of the plan set. The civil plans showed that there was some improvements going on at that intersection of West and Thornburg. Can you maybe take 30 seconds to say what those improvements will be?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So with this project will be the development of the, this area, I may first purpose that this area is private. It's a private street. There's no dedicated right-of-way. With this development, they'll be required to build on their portion of the property the widened up, the dedication of right-of-way, so they'll be paved, there'll be a paved roadway, which will be much, which will be a significant improvement for ingress and egress, excuse me, for just, for egress, because it'll be a smooth paved surface. They'll have frontage, curb gutter sidewalk, as noted in the exhibit. And as far as for site distance on, for leaving, for egress, leaving onto Thornburg, there'll be sufficient site distance because there is no parking on Thornburg. So site distance should not be an issue for viewing traffic heading north and southbound.
Thank you, David. We have a question for, from Commissioner Seifert. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. David, a quick question here. I'm looking at the topo, you know, I'm looking at the preliminary, well, it's a utility plan. It looks like the improvements are only going to be on the side of the street where this applicant is building the project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what about the street itself, the asphalt? Is that going to be improved or are we just talking about curb gutter sidewalk improvements?
Everything along the frontage or within the property, with all the property will be improved. They'll be required to pave the roadway and to install curb gutter and sidewalk.
Just on their portion?
Just on their portion because it would be, we would have to acquire the other right-of-way for the full widening of the street section, which would require either dedication from the adjacent property owner or through eminent domain. And there are no plans for that to occur.
Chair, I've got another question. Can you see?
Please go ahead.
Okay, David, Mr. Zeus is correct about drainage and nobody wants anybody else's property. And I know we have very restricted laws these days with the SWIP, the regional water quality control and the city's implementation of that. So I'm looking at the grading and drainage plan. I don't see a grading basin. I don't see where this plan has been designed to hold, retain its own water. I saw some pervious pavers, I believe, but it's very hard to zoom and look at the plans and do everything all at once. Can you help me on the drainage? Can you help Mr. Zeus out on that question?
Yeah, the pervious pavers are part of the LED system for low-impact development, which will address the drainage.
Are we saying that that's going to take all the water on this property like we're required to on the commercial piece nowadays?
That's the intent.
Where's the water going to go?
That's the intent.
So we're going to drain everything to the front of the lot, to the pervious pavers, and they're supposed to drain the water before it goes out onto the street, into the gutter and down to Mr. Zeus's property?
Well, it will drain, the design is to drain into the basins or into this, into the paver area and then it will release itself as it historically has always done because it's historically has been a dirt site and whatever was there before will continue to be as it was. But the improved, the impervious sections will be addressed with the pavers. So what I'm trying to say is the, there won't be a significant increase in drainage runoff. It'll be as it has been.
So there won't be a significant reduction either?
It'll be as it was before the development. And most of it is a dirt surface. So it'll be as it was.
So am I mistaken when I'm thinking that we have a requirement that you're supposed to hold all your own water on your own property these days?
Well, it's going to have to bleed off at the highest rate in a severe rainstorm. There's no project retains its water completely at 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Mr. Stanley, I do see you raising your hand. Typically, public comment's limited to one comment. I know Mr. Zeus spoke on the second, twice, and that was just in answer to the question from the city engineer. So at this time, I am going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the item and bring it back to the, I'm sorry, bring it to the applicant for rebuttal. Mr. Smith, please go ahead. Mr. Smith, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to respond. I would want to point out, we do have drainage inlets in the northeast and northwest corners of the property and we have a very talented civil engineering team and the city's public work staff reviewing this for code compliance and we will be meeting all of those requirements. Yeah, in regard to the parking, the existing sort of history there, first of all, the compliance or the violations are being addressed with the contractor and the owner. The owner has relocated his business to a yard in Rover Beach and is no longer operating his business out of this property. I just talked to the contractor today to confirm that. By making these improvements to the frontage, we really are eliminating the opportunity for street parking in front because we have the driveway accommodating both the duplex and the single-family homes, which would really make any street parking in front of our project unfeasible. Yeah, so if there are any other concerns of the public comment, that I think I've addressed those all, the water runoff again has been addressed by civil. We're open to looking at making improvements to really eliminate the, if we can, the, I don't see why we could not move the buildings into the 15-foot westerly setback or make other modifications needed to accommodate the concern about the projection. And for the duplex, we did really take a strong look and redesigned actually the units by tightening up. Just those six inches in each unit really started to make the bedrooms smaller than we would like to have. Got to be less than 10 feet and the hallway got to be less than three and a half feet. And that three-foot wide hallway, just really, that's that long, wasn't working for us. That's why we did ask for, and seemed to have the, seemed to have the planning staff feel like it would be reasonable to ask for the one-foot encroachment of a duplex. We're just looking for clarification or maybe conditions or, you know, what the planning commission would like to see us to do to go forward from here.
Mr. Smith, what is the overhang?
The overhangs, we have, let's see. The overhangs are two feet typical and if we had any issues with projections into setbacks, they'd have to be addressed for fire or code. We would be addressing that in construction documents.
But as it stands now, you'd be two feet off the property line at the fascia, right?
Yeah, so we have a, correct, we have a six-inch overhang on that.
Closet, pardon.
Closet projection, correct. But yeah, it'd be constructed of, you know, one-hour code-required materials construction.
Right, right. Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant from the commission? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing, I'm sorry, of this item.
Chair, I had a question of the applicant.
Oh, please go ahead, Commissioner Dickerson.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, I mean, you've seen the discussions that have taken place so far and there's obviously enough concern about these overhangs and the encroachment on the property in the east. If we, if it were our desire to see that not take place and to move the building, move the plants, move the building more to the west to accommodate that, would you be, would you be open to that condition or would you rather see the project tabled for an additional meeting down the road, which should give you a little bit more time to consider what it is you wanted to do with those overhangs and the other parts?
Yes, so thank you for the question, Commissioner Dickerson. I, after spending significant time for us looking at the duplex and given that there is this process in place for an encroachment, I would ask that if we are allowed to maintain this for a better design, to maintain the fire road, which is quite wide at 20 feet, given the existing condition of the single-family home that we're not planning to move or modify, we're really pretty tight on space, I would ask that if we could have, maintain that four-foot setback and for the single-family homes, simply shift them as needed, you know, to reduce your, mitigate the concern of the closet's projection, it'd be easier for us to make that move and without a negative effect to the quality of the spaces that we're providing, which again, we are really trying to make these homes as nice as possible given the space we have. And so would we need to move for a nine-foot wide projection, would the entire single-family home, two homes at units A and B, need to move two and a half feet or can we compromise and say, "We'll split the difference somewhere and just get it back off of the property line just maybe a foot and a half further from where it is now"? Would that be a reasonable compromise and mitigate the concern enough for maybe making that a condition of approval and getting through this hearing tonight and we can move forward with developing this in the construction documents?
Thank you. I thank you, Mr. Smith. I will go ahead and close the public portion and bring this back to the commission for discussion, comments, and deliberation. So bring it back to the commission. Does any commissioner wish to make a comment?
I can start.
Please go ahead.
As the project stands, I cannot reach a finding that, which is D in the conditional use permit, that the proposed project does not affect the adjacent property negatively. I understand that they want to make their property and their project as nice as possible. However, it does affect the adjacent property and therefore I wouldn't be able to make the finding in D. Well, I understand that the, you know, the side yards... While I understand that they, you know, the side yard setback, the five to four and the two and a half feet along the interior side are to accommodate the fire lane, they're also to accommodate a closet, which is really not necessary, and while I appreciate that they said, well, it doesn't introduce a window or a vantage point that could create a privacy issue, that really isn't the issue. The issue is that you're creating a closet for property that we're on, but it negatively impacts the neighbor's property, and for that reason, I cannot get to make the finding in D, and therefore, I wouldn't be in favor of this project as it sits here today before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Seifert?
I'm gonna have to just tag right along with Commissioner, Mayorville Hernandez. The, you, you've got plenty of property here to make this a very successful project. You're increasing the density, you're increasing the housing, you've got, you've got all the makings of a successful project here without impacting your neighbors. So the, the, as, as the conditional use, the findings, the findings are not there for my, for my decision either. If, if I was a next-door neighbor, I would definitely be impacted by this design. And we, we have, I mean, five feet setback, this, it's a site. I mean, it's not much to begin with. So I, I, I really believe that this project can be successful, but I, I can't, I can't support this particular design tonight. I, I think that they can come back, like Commissioner Dickerson had asked, you know, if you want, you want to postpone, you want to compact, redesign, those are all valid questions. And, and I, I think it can be a successful project, but I, I can't find in favor of the way it is now.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Commissioner Blanco?
Not to beat a dead horse here, but I, I do agree with both commissioners, and I think Commissioner Seifert mentioned it earlier, you know, I think there is room for redesign, if not the floor plans, at least the site. I am more in, in favor of encroaching onto the 15-foot setback to the, to the street with that first building, I believe it was building A. I, I don't see that as a, a major impact to, to anybody, but preserving the side yard setbacks is, I think, more critical for, for the adjacent neighbors, and I think we've heard from them already. And I, I think that, that it would be, I, I just can't, I just can't find a reason to, to say that this is a much better design, it doesn't impact the community negatively, and that there's really no other way to design the site, you know. So I, I, I agree with the comments that have been said by all commissioners, really that I, I think there's a way to make this design a little bit better, palatable for everybody. I also did have a few concerns regarding the drainage, after kind of looking at the drainage plan and hearing from the neighbors, you know, I'd hate to see us negatively affecting the drainage conditions down the street and putting more water over there. So I, I definitely think we should be taking a closer look and making sure we don't negatively affect the people down the street, downhill of this property. The parking issue, I, I, you know, that's, that's a concern in a lot of places. I don't know how you address it here, but certainly, you know, taking a look at all of these components together, and coming back maybe with a revision to the design in the best interest of everybody makes the most sense to me, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. Commissioner Dickerson?
As, as Commissioner Blanco said, I don't want to be dead horse. I, I agree with all the other commissioners. As we have discussed, I think this needs to be postponed. I think the, the applicant probably needs to go back to the drawing board on this, take into, take into account what we've said, and make the appropriate alterations. Initially, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about moving the, going into the 15-foot encroachment on building A, turning, turning north off of west onto Thornburg, I'm a little concerned about just making sure that they have adequate view, but the reality is that the building we're talking about, building A, if you did move it, probably the pre-existing building already blocks the view in a more substantial way than that additional, you know, two feet or, or whatever, or two and a half or three feet that we're already talking about. In regards to the applicant discussing kind of a, the splitting of the baby here and saying, well, you know, maybe we can add a little bit here, a little bit there, I, I, for me, personally, I just think that we, we should stick with the, with the setback on the, on the east side without, without encroaching further into it, a foot, foot and a half, two feet, three feet, whatever that amount is. I think, I think it's just too much of an impact on the potential of what the property owner to the east could do. So whatever, I think whatever needs to be done, I think needs to be done with the, the building plans and the setbacks that, that, you know, that are called for. And, and as Commissioner Seifert and Commissioner Blanco said, I think that, you know, you're looking at probably a very successful project, even with moving these, I, I don't think that there's going to be any issues with, with things not penciling out properly, so so those are my, that's my two cents. I think we should probably go ahead and postpone this, move down the road, and assume that's what the applicant would put to.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson, and I, I also just have a couple of comments. I, I like the project. I think it's a good, good project. I think it will really enhance the area. I like the improvements that would be happening at Thornburg and West Street. There's obviously some, some drainage issues that, that could be ironed out of sight and requirements. I know you reached out, Commissioner Dickerson, you reached out to the applicant on the continuation. Didn't seem like that was his desire to go. I, I just, I, I don't normally open the public con, the, the public, I'm sorry, I don't normally go back and allow the, the applicant to speak, but I, I think it's important enough to, to let him speak on this. I'll go ahead and, and let the applicant speak and see if, if, hear what the comments are from the, the commissioners, if there is something that he might like to add. Mr. Mr. Smith, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lopez. So I hear you loud and clear, and would just ask that, since I, I think it's pretty cut and dry what you're after, just to expedite the project, was it a simple enough ask that we could make this a condition of approval, that we are not encroaching into the east, easterly setback, and be able to move the project forward, given that, that address your concerns that way, or do you need to relook at this in more detail?
I, I think, I think the, the commission was asking for a little bit more detail in terms of not encroaching on any of the setbacks, unless I, I misspoke on that, I, or misheard, but it, it did seem like that. I'll, I'll bring it back to the commission. Is that, is that kind of what the, the, the commission would like to see? Mr. Seifert?
I, I know we have the condition on the west side, the 15-foot setback, but if, if we had to make any kind of recommendation, that, that is where I would move things. But this is a big enough lot, I think that things can be designed, they might not even have to encroach into that 15 feet and still create the results, but that, that's, that's the direction I would head. I would stay away from the neighbors, and I would move to the west. That creates more issues with the city, so we would definitely have to check in with Cody and planning and make sure that they're acceptable with that. Like Commissioner Dickerson says, there is a, a light of sight that has to be maintained for all traffic, but I believe that in this situation, it would still be maintained. But, yeah, I, I, I would head that direction, but I, I'm going to point now, you know, the one foot I was not happy about, but now that it's created this situation, I would say we need to stick to what we would make any other applicant stick to. Go to the right setbacks, utilize your property, design it correctly, get the maximum out of it that you can, and come back to us and show us what you've done. That's, that's what I'd like to see.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Any other, Commissioner, wishing to make a comment on that? Along those same lines, whether or not this can be taken care of in the condition, or whether or not maybe we continue this on to another meeting and, and look at those changes that, or whatever. Conclusion, the architect or the applicant comes up. Commissioner Dickerson, please go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I, I take a general stance on these things regarding the desires of the board commissioned by, by commission members. In this case, Commissioner Seifert has asked that the applicant, that we move this down the road and, and have the applicant come back with the actual designs that, that he and the rest of us can see. So from that standpoint, I would support what Commissioner Seifert has asked for, so that we can get a full understanding of, of this and full understanding of the, of the plans as they will be finalized. That would be my, my stance on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson, and I would agree with that. So with that said, we can move on to a motion, and, or, I'm sorry, I think I have some lieutenant going on. Any other commissioners?
Chair Lopez and commissioners, I just wanted to mention some available hearing dates that we have coming up, that this could be continued to, if your commission is going to end up continuing it tonight. So there's hearings that we could have on January 6th or January 20th, and I think we should also just make sure that those dates work for the applicant as well.
Well, I, if I can speak, Chair?
Please.
I believe the applicant is asking us to vote. I don't know if he agreed to a continuance.
Okay, yeah, and, and that's what, what I, I was kind of, I, I see him raising his hand. Mr. Smith, go, go ahead. Mr. Smith, are you there?
Sorry, yes, no, I am okay with continuing. It sounds like you want to see how we're going to accommodate these changes, and if that's the best way forward for us, and the idea of the condition isn't going to accommodate that, then yes, I agree to continue, and I'd be available January 6th.
Okay. Okay, I thank, thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Oh, please.
I move that we continue Gonzalez multifamily residential project at 403 West Street, PD 2019-0013 to January 6th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
I would second that motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Seifert. Please have a roll.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Stanley, I know you've had your hand up. This meeting will be continued to the January 6th date. Please, I, I don't know, maybe Data, you could add him to your, to your emailing list, just so that he's aware of the, the postings online, and I can make the meeting on, on the 6th of January. With that said, we will go on to the next item of the, the agenda, which is other business, or reports from planning commission and staff. Do you have any staff report?
Chair Lopez, commissioners, I do have a, just a brief update on our, our upcoming study sessions and hearings. So we do have a study session scheduled for tomorrow, and the Vino Bello apartment projects, apartment project is going to be discussed at that study session. And then our next public hearing will be on December 16th, and we have two items that are scheduled for that hearing. One of them is the Aquist Apache, also known as Blosser Southeast Area 5B tentative tract map, and then we also have the Vino Bello apartment project scheduled for that date as well. And then we do not have any items scheduled for study session on December 17th, so I think we, I would recommend that we cancel that study session. And then the next hearing after that would be the January 6th hearing, which we continued the Gonzalez item to.
Okay, so thank you, and, and how do we, we, hold on, can, canceling that study session? Is Heather around? How do we do that? Do we just say, can we cancel that, or?
I don't believe it requires a vote. The, um, uh, planning department can just post a canceled meeting due to no items.
Okay, if, if that, so you said you do have to have a vote?
You do not need a vote.
All right, thank, thank you, Heather.
Now, I do have a question about the first meeting of the year. Will we be voting, will it be placed on the calendar to vote for a chair, vice?
Chair Lopez and commissioners, I believe we won't be able to do that at the first meeting, because I don't know that we're going to know a hundred percent what changes are going to be made to the commission for this next year, so.
19th.
Excuse me?
I think, I think they'd make their decision on the 19th, isn't it?
Oh, okay. So, yeah, we, we'll wait until the, those decisions have been made, and then we can vote in the chair and vice chair then.
So probably February then, first, probably the first session in February.
Yes, that sounds correct.
Any other requests from planning commissioners or, or reports from planning commissioners?
No.
Commissioner Seifert, please.
Yes, well, I happen to notice a, a very large piece of graffiti. Is that something you discuss here?
Sure.
Um, yeah, it just happens to be on the wall above Yummy Donuts, and I, I, I just happened to be there, I wasn't getting one, well, maybe, maybe one. But above the laundry mat, they, they, they've tagged it before, they, so, you know, the city came in and they cleaned it, but, I mean, there's a very substantial 12-foot, five-foot tall graffiti. Maybe we could get the graffiti people out there and get that thing cleaned up. It's, 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 it's really big.
Okay, I don't, I, maybe, maybe Heather can let Tony.
I think Heather's in charge of that, isn't she? Yeah.
I can let code compliance know. I'm not sure if it's them or another department that does the cleanup, but I, we can figure that out.
Yeah, there's an engagement.
Can, can, can we, can we just flow with what Commissioner Seifert said and say that it's all on Heather's shoulders, and therefore, boy, if it doesn't get done, it's about Heather? Can we just do that?
So I guess I'm getting some scrub brushes and heading over there?
I'll help you, Heather. I'll help you. I, I just, get your ring, slicker.
Okay, and then, and then, can we, I, I don't know if the last meeting, we had a date to look at the traffic or, or look at what we can do for the West Main, I'm sorry, the Main and Broadway intersections, or, or how we can start looking at that? Do we, do we have a date set for that? I don't think we did.
No, Chair and commissioners, we don't have a date set for that yet, but I can speak with our community development director, Chen Ying, and talk to him about options, and then get back to your commission on some dates.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
And, and, and to kind of riff off of that, I, I had sent a email to, to Chen as well, and so, and he'd responded. So hopefully, we can also start looking into perhaps some sort of a, a time report on moving traffic, truck traffic from the west side of town to 101, and what are the, what are the various routes that, and alternate routes that, that we could, we could have. So maybe along those same lines, if we, if we do a, if we end up getting a report back, perhaps we can at least get some, either preliminaries or at least know that the, the ball is moving forward in that regard.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. I, I also, just to add to that, when we had our open streets, when we closed off Main Street at Broadway, gosh, it would have been, not this August, but the previous August, or I, I can't remember when it was, does, does anyone know how the trucks were made aware that they had to take a different route on Broadway and, and, actually, actually, Main Street was closed?
They put up those, um, construction signs, that they put up, like when they're gonna divert traffic?
No, 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 no.
That they light up?
Right, right.
So they, so they, so the company- So, they, so the companies weren't, uh, kind of pre, pre-warned that there was going to be a closure?
I believe they were, but they also put, put those up.
I see.
I believe they had both. Uh, Chair, real quick too, while we're talking about this study session, you know, just to put it out there, I think we, we want to make sure we have Caltrans at this session so that we can be talking to the people, you know, we can't just internally talk about the ideas without having the appropriate audience and, and the owner of these roads, so I think we need to reach out to Caltrans and have it be a comprehensive discussion so that we can get real input and make some real progress on these discussions. Um, so, I would just say, Dana, that, um, you know, you're reaching out to Chen, but, uh, you know, we, we want public works involved, we want Caltrans involved, we want all the, all the stakeholders involved to really have a, a productive discussion that, that could go somewhere, so that, that'd be my whole thing.
I would agree with Commissioner Blanco.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea, yeah, thank you.
And we, we did have an attendee from Caltrans that was very amenable to doing this change, and I don't remem, I believe it was a gal, I don't remember her name, uh, but she did attend the meeting, uh, and, and she said, "Caltrans would think about moving that, that street, that access."
Doesn't the ex-employee Haley work for them now?
She does.
The city?
Yeah.
So, she's, she's probably a contact that we would be able to utilize.
Yeah, I can...
Dana, if you, if there's any way you can maybe get the director here?
Absolutely, yeah, I can reach out to Caltrans, I have some contacts with Caltrans that I can, I can look into that, and we can make sure that we have a meeting with everyone involved so that we have a good comprehensive discussion.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then Heather, I, my office is about half a block away from the project tomorrow, it's study session, uh, that is the only item of, of, of our study session. Should I show up and, and just kind of open up the meeting and then take off, or should I not even go?
No, per, per the new rules, you are required to go and announce why you're participating.
Oh, right, right, right.
Actually, under, under the rule, if you're at a meeting, you, um, can't leave early without disclosing that you'll be missing an item, or you can't arrive late to sit and have missed an earlier item. Um, but if you, if it's the only item on the agenda and you aren't attending that meeting, then you'd be okay, um, but it's purely, it's certainly your prerogative, if you'd like to open the meeting and be part of, you know, opening and closing, you can, but if you do not, I do not believe you are required to attend.
Okay, I hate missing meetings, I just thought maybe it'd be more, um, maybe I'd just attend, open it, and then pass it on to Commissioner Blanco or Vice Chair Blanco, and then, and be gone for the day, I, I could, I could certainly do that. I could read all these, all these notes that I have, but, okay, well, thank, thank you, Heather, thank you.
Chair, I, I have one last matter, a, a personal matter, and I, hopefully, it doesn't fall into the category of self-promotion, but, uh, I used to do an enormous, uh, Christmas display, and it's been about four years since, uh, we did it, and, uh, and my wife and I brought it back this year, so anybody that wants to drive by Palm Court and see a 60-foot tall Christmas tree, fully lit with gifts and everything else, just to feel good, please do. I, I hope it, I hope it makes everyone feel just a little better about life.
We'd definitely come and look at that.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome, it looks great, I was there last week.
Thank you very much.
All right, everyone, if that, if that ends everything, we are adjourned at 8:24. Thank you, everyone, have a, have a nice, see you tomorrow.
Thank you, everyone.